What you call the order? The City of Columbia Planning Commission Meeting, June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. We'll start with an invocation by Dan and then we'll all rise from the pledge of allegiance.
Lord, we acknowledge your presence among us tonight. We know you're always with us and we pray for your guidance during this meeting. Give us the wisdom to work in the best interest of everyone in our community. In your name we pray. Amen.
I'm proud to lead this group of the United States of America. And do the real opportunities for this to stand while I may should underlie in this with liberty that I would have to all.
Dan, if you call the role, please.
Scott?
I'm here.
Bryce? Ted?
Here.
Jeff?
Here.
Rick?
Here.
Mark?
Here. You've all received a copy of the minutes of the meeting, of the May ninth meeting. Is there any additions or corrections to those? And if not, they'll stand as presented. There is no old business, so we'll move right into new business. First item is a site plan review. Brian Frederick, two fifteen South Main Street, a retail game store.
Hello, I'm Brian Frederick. I've met a vast majority of you at this rate, but allow me to introduce myself once again. Um, I have lived and grown up in Columbia almost the entirety of my life. Um, and I've been here for the community in a multitude of ways, not just Colombian locally, but for our local gaming community. And as stated on here, um, it goes over the summary of how our local gaming community has needed a store for some time, both for our hobbies, but also a place to game and commune, if you will. And, um, I've been working extremely diligently, um, to make this happen. Um. I don't think there's much else to say. I believe all of you are mostly acquainted with my story and with my context, but do you have any questions?
Any questions from the board? Uh, Central Business District, it's a C three. I believe it fits real well and if we have a motion, please.
Make a motion to approve that submitted.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Dan, if you would.
Scott?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes. Good luck to you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you very much.
You guys have a good evening, alright? Thank you.
The next item is a site plan review. Lisa Brayden doing business at L and B Holdings LLC, six ten East Park Avenue, chiropractic office, human and animal.
Evening.
Evening.
So you want to give us a idea? What you want to do?
Sure. Um, so currently it sits as the Hex Restaurant. Um, I plan on tearing that down completely, uh, hopefully by this fall and then, uh, start talking to builders about building a six thousand square foot facility for both human chiropractic and animal chiropractic. So three thousand square foot would be human chiropractic. Um, expanding my office so that I can offer a second doctor to come to my location and have massage therapy on site, acupuncture on site, like a wellness community on one side for humans and then the same on the other side. It would mirror that except for it would be for animals, so small animals primarily. Dogs, cats, um, anything that needed to haul in, everything would be housed inside and under the roof. Um, so there would not be animals outside. It would be very similar to a veterinary clinic and I would probably have a veterinarian on staff with me.
Okay. So are you? There's no large animals?
Not at this time. Um, if things went well with the small animal, then I would have to come back and I would ask to do an addition to the back of the building where I might have large animals, which would consist of horses mainly primarily. Um, and in that case, there would still be a large building and there would be stalls inside and the animals would be housed inside similar to a large, like an equine veterinary hospital.
Okay.
So no animals are outdoors at all.
At this point, you're not talking large animals.
No, right now we're talking humans and dogs.
Okay.
Used as a primarily of an outpatient for the pretty animal side of it.
Yeah, yeah. So.
Safe to assume.
With the, even if I, you know, with the small animals, yes, it's outpatient, nothing is staying, um, after hours. If we got to the large animal portion, um, then we would talk about horses that would probably be coming in for weeks at a time and maybe even months at a time um, to stay indoors and do a water treadmill, to do acupuncture chiropractic. So it would all be housed indoors with stalls. Um, very large facilities are in, uh, western states that I'm taking a look at and exploring those facilities to see, bringing something that's going to be different. Um, I think the closest facility like this is, uh, Cleveland, Akron and Pittsburgh. So it would be something to kind of bridge the gap.
Cool.
Yeah.
I, I personally think it's very intriguing.
Yeah.
About animal chiropractic. Have you had practice in that?
Um, I've been practicing, practicing right now for six years in town.
Okay, with animal?
Yes.
Okay, I did. I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Six years now.
I mean, or it's like. So. Or approve it as small animal.
Yeah. You would have to come back if you want, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. But zoning approval for small animals now was the understanding that if you want to increase it.
You need to come back.
We're zoned right. Pardon? Right, right now we're zoned right. Everything's good. Think so, but I still would like to make sure that we separated into two. Right, to abstain from the first phase. Yeah, yeah. We're fine.
Yeah. I think so.
Alright. Want to make sure it's all clear. Yeah, so.
And then also regarding the sign on Route fourteen, I would like to, uh, improve that. It's the hex sign that has the arrow pointing. Um, I would like to cover that with municipal sign and sales, make some metal signs that you see around town. I would like, it's not going to change in size. It's going to be the same size that it is currently. It would just be refaced with blue ribbon chiropractic that way.
That's going to be a separate issue. Yeah, that's something you're going to have to look at discuss.
Okay. Okay.
Signage, has she seen, have you seen our signage moves and regulations?
Now.
I would strongly suggest you get a copy from Augie about our signage of, uh, ordinances.
Sure.
Uh, I think that would be important to look at that.
Okay.
Yeah, right. For saying what people sign outdated.
Well, I don't know whether we can have a sign offsite.
Yeah. That is always an issue.
That's an issue.
On site side. There are some that are in existence. We don't know how long they've been in existence and that hex sign, I'll go there for that. I'm not sure how long it's been, as long as I can think of. Yeah. Um, but you're changing and, you know, whereas that might have been grandfathered because I'm sure it existed prior to our zoning.
Yeah, that was prior zoning, for sure.
Changing it, now you're going to have to comply with our zoning. So, and one of our, one of the things in our zoning ordinance is you're not seeing too many offsite, you know, any signs approved. Um, we have this come occasionally, you know, signage on your building in front of you, on your property, not a problem, but someplace else such as on eight Route fourteen directing you, that could be a real, that could be a problem. I'm not going to say it is, but it could be. So that's why I think that should be a separate discussion.
Okay.
Well, I, I think it's exciting what you're doing. I think it's good, uh, like your project, so I'd like to, uh, make a motion to approve this, uh, chiropractic office for human and animal as we discuss small animals.
There's one. Yep, base one. I'll second that.
I have a motion in a second. Uh, I would mention that between the residential behind you and, and the commercial property, there has to be some sort of buffer. Whether it be, I don't know what's there now, if it's a row of trees or whatever, but something like that has to be maintained. You know, a buffer between the commercial property as far as light noise. So there's got to be some sort of buffer across the back property there. I think there is a row of pines.
Yeah, half of it is a fence and half of it is trees.
Yeah.
So just don't cut those down.
Just don't cut, don't cut those down.
We'll have to replace.
We'll have to replace them, yeah.
Not. Any other suggestions?
I don't think I have any.
I would say when you go to demolition, you can beat with Lance, maybe more than help to get you through all that.
Okay.
There's a lot of things that have to happen first.
Okay.
So we have a motion in a second. Dan?
Ted?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
The next item is site plan review. Robert Schwartz. Total Generation Services LLC. Bill Villas eleven through twenty-two on Alicia Lane, Bills of Whispering Pines.
Hello, planning commission. My name is Robert Schwartz for the record. And, um, as you mentioned, uh, we're looking to build more villains. Currently, I've been building, um, it was a twenty-four unit development behind Whispering Pines. At this point, we have let's see, we have, uh, sixteen of the units built. And that leaves us with another eight units to build. What I'm here to inform you of is Kevin Price of KDC would like to purchase those lots and complete the project. Um, so at this point, that's what our intentions are. There's, the, the site is already, um, prepped. It's been graded. The utilities are already run. Um, water, sewer, electric, uh, there's quite a bit of investment already into those eight, eight units that haven't been completed yet. So, uh, we are looking to do that. I think he wants to get started in July. We have been in some discussion with Augie and, uh, Lances in the know. So just like to make sure, um, it's a good handoff to Kevin.
Any questions from the board?
So you're selling the property?
Yes.
It does need redeemed.
It will be, it will be redeemed, correct? Right now it's in Total Generation Services. We have a Mylar. Signed.
This property, where does this property lay? This little map that we get is.
Yeah. So, um, have you been, have you been to the back of Whispering Pines Village?
I have not.
Okay, so if you, if you enter in Whispering Pines Village, which is the retirement community, you get to the back of it. You first, uh, come upon Christian Court. And then it tees into Alicia Lane. Alicia Lane is designed to run east and west. So this particular area is to the west and it's at that end of that lane.
Okay.
I don't like it.
There are little thorough tracks.
Is that, is that the tracks there?
I have, uh, I have the original Mylar that was signed when we first did.
Things are, they're hard to email or take pictures.
Yeah.
There you go.
So these initially, uh, right now we have built, this is your part.
Oh, it's East Park, okay.
These are built, 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 these are the last four to build. And each of these were, have originally been designed, you know, to have their own property descriptions and they do. And it was signed off to be split in this fashion. So you would actually be buying this land here and building exactly the same as had been planted, designed, completing the project exactly to the teeth. Construction, footprint of the buildings. Elevations, everything.
This, this is a system living right here.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay.
And then as you know, I think, uh, Kevin's working on it right out here as well.
Yeah.
And then the only way to get back there is to go by the that's correct. Or news park. Yeah, as they act. Permanent easements through here.
Okay.
Yes. Okay.
So you have the dim Mylar?
Uh, no, but what, what I believe will happen according to, um, Chamberlain survey is they will, this will suffice in the meantime, and then they'll go ahead and get all they needed is, uh, Keith to sign off and take them down to the, to the county to get them actually recorded. Since the whole project has already been signed off on all the state. That was important.
Okay, so now I'm this project's been approved uh, back in fifteen. So that's, that was, was that just part of the project or was that the whole project?
The one in fifteen, this was approved prior to that in fifteen, this, these twelve units were approved.
Were approved.
And I built four of the twelve.
Okay.
And it's basically completing the, the remainder of that, what was, which is called phase two in the document of, um, the zoning. This unit eleven through whatever the other units are.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're like
Eleven through. Yeah, twenty-two.
The nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two already.
Okay. Okay, so you're just building eleven.
What was approved, eight additional structures.
Correct. It's just the remainder of the approved project of eleven through twenty-two.
Okay.
If it was approved, then basically right now, fact that it's going to change ownership, I don't really know that that's going to matter. Um, it's the same, it's still the same project.
I, I would, I look at it as kind of a courtesy call.
Yeah, I think so. That's, I don't think.
Yeah. Yeah, I, if it was just being going over there, I would just kept building, but you know, we want to make, I want to make sure, everyone wants to make sure that
Everything's fine.
Handoff that these are done. So, is there a name?
Pardon? Is there a name for, or, or should we just give them sort of blessing?
I don't think you need to take formal action because I think you already, predecessor planning commission already addressed this, already approved this. You're basically being told, hey, we're going to sell this, but it's going to be completed in the same manner. You know, Kevin Price was going to change it. That's a different matter. Then we might want to do site plan and start the whole process. But if what he's doing is completing the build out, so it's the same project.
Yep.
Good.
I think with that said, I, I, I believe it's fair to approve it and submit it. As, as as we understand, I wasn't here in fifteen, but.
Yeah, yeah, well, I wasn't either. That was, uh, chairman was Richard Simpson at that time, so.
I would suggest that we make a motion that's phase two. This was never finished on fifteen. What do you say, Mark?
Doesn't prove. I mean, you can basically make a motion approving phase two as it was originally proposed.
Cause it's being reeded or, or at least approved to build out.
Yeah.
The phase two.
Yeah.
Then you're covered. You want to make a motion to that. To make a motion that we approved as, as cited here, phase two of, uh, Total Generation Services LLC. A second motion.
I have a motion in a second. Dan?
Jeff?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Frankie. Yasbeck, is that right?
Yeah.
Uh, a pulp and smoothie bar, ninety-five Town Center Avenue, Unit D. Hello.
Hello. Every time I come here, I'm off the baseball field and it's all right.
I don't know. It's raining.
We're in the worst.
Okay, baseball, rain delays are for baseball.
The rest of the way it is, be at least a good rain, we were.
I know.
Yeah.
Parents are ready to be done with the season. I don't know what it is.
Kids are crying, not the parents.
That's right. Um, so I'm here again for a, uh, a site plan review for a kind of build out and what we're calling record on space two. So this is Frankie and I land this, um, called Smoothie Bar. Um, they have locations in Poland, it can feel already. Um, and they're interested in coming down Columbia for their location. Um, provided the site ran there approximately thirteen hundred square feet. Um, and you know, it's basically a quick service. Um, uh, smoothie, uh, yeah, yeah. So, but, uh, they're happy to answer any questions.
So this will be your third, third site?
Yeah, so hello everyone. We put a lot of thought and consideration where we put these stores and the reason why we have that latitude is we have a really strong reputation for our first two stores. So we think we're a good fit for the community. You know, we're near a gym. Um, I think it'll be a lot of times people are driving from Columbia to our other stores because there's not one closer here. So we think it's a good fit. Um, we're buying so much things, but such a growing area and just some quick background. We have such a populist menu, meaning we appeal to young kids, high school kids, college kids, adults, senior citizens. We're open seven days a week. We're fast casual. We're sort of a, not sort of, we're a healthy alternative to sort of fast food places and coffee shops. We're reasonably priced. We're extremely efficient and people just love our stores. And we just think we're a good fit for the community.
That's a great presentation. Absolutely. So big.
Rehearsed or not, you did well.
Should have had the camera running.
Um, well, that's exciting. Um, for us, it's always great to have new ventures in Columbia. We're glad that you recognize our community that way. Um, so, um, I think it's a great, great idea. I would move to approve the project.
Second. I have a motion in a second. Any more discussion? Dan, if you would, please.
Rick?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
There you go. Thank you very much.
Very good.
Good luck to you. Good luck to you. The next item, when, when are we thinking about that starting ballpark? Yeah. He's always puts it on you, huh?
I'm being a safe, I'm building you part.
Okay. Do it right now.
Now, we have a floor plan basically at this point. Um, so, you know, obviously we wanted everybody's blessing here and then really the next step would be for us to finalize that and get it engineered and then basically ready for smelting.
Good. Good. Very good. Thank you. Okay, well, you can tell us how the building department worked out. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Next item is a site time review. Aaron Meliger, ninety-five Town Center Avenue, Axio Fitness Center.
So potentially their neighbor.
Okay.
So Aaron has Axio Fitness and she's got
Seven.
Seven locations throughout northeast Ohio. Um, private training, she could speak to that, but you know, when I started this project, honestly, you know, Aaron and, and those folks are two people that I, um, look to, to be a part of this because I know they had a track record, they're good people. Aaron's from the area and, uh, after a couple of years of convincing, I think.
Well, you got her this far anyway.
We, uh, we submitted, so it's the same thing. It'd be a tenant, uh, build out site interview. We're a little, not quite as far along, um, with, with, uh, hers as we are with with the one for pulp. So she provided another locations, um, floor plan. Um, that will be very close to where we land. Just the size is going to be a little bit, uh, smaller. So that's the basic layout and Aaron can kind of give you an overview for operation.
Yeah, yeah. Basically we do private personal training. So we're kind of a boutique fitness model. You could say it's all one-on-one. All of my locations are uh, either one, two or three room studios, which means if it's a two or a three room, we just have fully equipped private training rooms. So we might have two or three sessions going on at a time. But there's no audience. There's no sharing equipment. Everything's just, uh, a very personal experience. So we're planning on making this a, a two-room studio ideally, uh, for this location.
Any questions from the board? I'd like to make a motion.
I would say this fits just as, you know, there's a little something different over there and I think it fit perfectly. I'll make a motion. We accept that, submit it.
I have a motion. Go ahead, second.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Dan?
Scott?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Very good. Good luck to you.
Thank you very much.
I don't know. I need to see her.
My name's Bruce Love. You might know me from Summer on Homes, uh, which turned out to be a beautiful development. Uh, we have a couple movie in the Columbus, from Columbus. He's a veteran. The two lots that we're trying to go put together replat, there are certain vestiges such as there's, uh, storm sewer, some other utilities and we were told it would be better just to make it one large slot. A couple love the idea. And here I am.
Okay. There's a utility right away down through the middle of it or will be through the middle of it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Everything's all stayed down before we do anything. I would be dealing with the city to make sure everything is correct. We'll probably keep the house on one end closest we can and they're aware of it. They're just happy. They also like having the They're just happy, they also like having the, uh, forever behind them. No neighbors.
Okay. Okay.
Personally, I think we should get the train. Hot dogs, ice cream, to the ice, to the, uh, ball fields, they're doing no good.
Yeah. Right there, yeah, there is an easement down the middle. As far as the joining the two lots, as long as that easement's maintained.
We're not changing anything.
Yeah.
We can't.
Right, you can't.
I've been in this business since I've been six years old. Doesn't get any easier.
Any questions from the board? Somebody like to make a motion?
Make a motion, approve as is.
I have a motion, somebody like to second that motion?
I'll second it.
I have a motion in a second. Dan, when you're ready.
Ted?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes. Very good, thank you.
Thank you all.
Next item. Site plan review, Jeremy Athie, three eighteen North Main Street, retail welding supply. Is Jeremy here?
Or Paul?
Yeah, the ball field. Uh, I hope he's here yet to come. And do we table this or just? Yeah. Need a motion to table. I'll make the motion to table. I have a motion in a second.
Ready?
Yeah, whenever you're ready.
Jeff?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Next item is a replat, Craig Stratton, one twenty-six Manor Drive, Lot Number Thirty-One.
Planning Commission, kid. I own one twenty-six Manor Drive, and to the east of me, I own the lot, which used to be Bellars, remember Bellars?
Yeah, okay.
Okay. What's that? Way back when.
Before we had gray hair.
Mine never changed, anyways. A couple, i- it's gone through many, many, uh, owners until. Gordon bought it. And it was, uh, the original property was split. To, uh, sell it quickly. And he has no yard, he had one five feet off my, yeah, or his porch, and that's all mine. And, uh. Mom bought it. To prevent anybody from building on it. It's not big enough to build on it. And, uh, so now I own it because of her death. And I want to keep the. The area looking green, I don't want another house in there, so I don't want anybody to do anything with it, so. Gordon needs property, I need less property, so we split it.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
So it's already surveyed, you have a mile or?
Yeah.
And then you're just putting a lot up.
Yes. I can approve as is.
Okay, I have a motion?
A second.
I have a motion in a second. When you're ready, Dan?
Rick?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes. Very good.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
We'll get that mile or signed and you'll be good to go. Is there any commission comments? Any public comments? Yeah, well, you gotta come up, so everybody can hear you.
Yeah, when we live at. Gil Bonsey, we live at twenty-six Union Street. When we moved in there, the pantry was falling off, so our contractor tore it down. We now would like to put this back up. And so our. Contractor came over to get permission. And then we received a notice on the door that we had to apply to come here. To ask if it was okay because. Somehow my home is a historical home. In Columbia. So. Originally, five years ago, we were going to add a much larger addition. But at our age, we decided we weren't going to do that, but I do need the pantry back. It's nine feet by eleven feet.
Existing foundation is there. Was it origi- was there a pantry there originally?
Yes. Yes, and it was wood, the house is. First floor is brick, second floor is clapboard. So we would be putting the original back. But it will be insulated.
You're not extending past the original footprint?
No, it's. It's very obvious where it was.
Does it? Yeah, I don't, I don't understand what the historical, yeah, has to do with it.
Was your house right on the alley?
No. That's a. No, that's a rental property, we are the second one in. From the alley.
Okay.
I spray painted it brown.
Okay, is, is it the dark brick or, no, it's the one right beside?
It's the dark brick.
Okay, okay.
Okay, listen.
So I don't have a microphone, but, uh. Back in the mid-seventies, put heritage markers, and, and that's what she's referring to.
Okay.
Get people to tear their house down, do something with it differently. I believe you were gonna do something, you were gonna add additions to the back, right? There was a utility pole down there, and, okay, so just the. You know, the picture of the right house. So. My recommendation would be to have your doors and joints of August to. Did you have some pictures from? Prior?
Maybe from the real estate person.
Yeah, so that would be nice, we could see that you're trying to.
But I will be improving that because that had a shag roof. And I will have a cable.
I, I don't see that. That's only, I don't see that. Yeah, we'd just like to see some kind of drawing before.
But does that involve us as far as a, a permit to build an addition? So you think historic, uh, she goes with the bad condition?
Yeah, oh, okay.
On the outside.
Okay.
Heritage marker was a project of the Historical Society of the City in line.
Okay, did not know that.
Nineteen seventy-six.
We really owned a home that was on the national registry.
And this was, this was a local.
I understand that.
It was.
Right.
Well-intentioned.
So I mean, as far as if it fits the lot, if the setbacks are right. You know. It's, it would.
We wouldn't want. I mean, for the heritage marker. From what I know about. You know, similar construction, similar, I mean, that's it's. You know, hockey, I just might not want it.
So in other words, you're saying if it had like cedar siding, you want cedar siding back, if it had shake, you want shake back?
If you want it to fit the.
Fit the decor of the.
The house. Right, I agree.
You're a designer, retired. And trust me, you cannot match that brick. It is not available.
Right, but I'm just saying that they're just trying to get as close to something of that era.
The era.
The era, seventy-six.
Um, no, the house is, the house is.
Hundred years old.
It's a hundred years old, but I'm saying seventy-six is from the.
Well, I'm giving a little bit of leeway. Seventy-six, whatever that area of that time period, before that, you could have changed it from brick to. Yeah, we didn't have vinyl, then we got aluminum.
Right, it was probably a clapboard edition anyway.
Yeah, something like that.
Okay.
On two wooden posts.
Why, sure.
Well, it won't be two wooden. And hopefully, I won't be flooding the basement. Like the old one did.
Okay.
I think, you know, I would agree with what Lance is saying, I think just get plans so August can see those. And I don't see this as any problem. Appreciate you coming in because that lovely historical marker, heritage marker. That's why you're here, um, but. That being said, I don't really think there's too much that we're going to need to do. Let them just to show. What Lance was saying to Matt. Just if you provide. Information to the city on two looks. Would that be sufficient?
Should we leave that at Augie's discretion?
Yeah. At audience's discretion.
Yeah.
And he has our.
Yeah. Oh, okay. Oh, there you go.
Well, there you go, it's perfect. Okay, so do you need a motion of that effect? You want to, that way you can show that they were nice enough to be here, keep a group something. Is that? So the way I expressed it, they'll just provide the, the drawings to the city. And, uh, if they meet, you know, the standards of. Of what was set back in the seventies, then. And so we approve that concept.
I'll second.
Very good, I agree.
Get all that?
I'll give you a couple extra bits.
Okay.
No, it's that.
Ready?
Yep.
Scott?
Yes. Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes. Good luck, folks.
Thanks for coming in.
For coming in. Really appreciate it, thank you.
See you later.
So I do have one question on. The heritage marketing, since that was brought to light. If somebody has a building in town here that's dilapidated, needs to be torn down with that heritage marker. That become another issue?
Be happy to address that at the next meeting because I'm going to, I just made a note to. Kind of try to look back at. The whole idea of the heritage marker. So that I understand and can answer that question.
Cause I know, I know one that may be coming to the demolition.
Yeah.
Part. Yeah. Okay.
Alright.
I mean, that could dictate a lot of things in town.
Yeah, good.
Get that point.
Well, one of the proponents of the heritage markers. Was Mrs. White. She was very. Familiar with the history of the town village of Columbia, and was very interested in preserving, especially when it came to residences. Now, there were other people who were part of the Historical Society, but. If I know that Mrs. White was very involved in this project.
Okay.
Is that the way they made down?
Yep.
Yeah.
I remember that, I was a kid.
Yeah.
God bless Mark Shaver.
Any other comments? I will make a motion to adjourn.